Hello, I'd like to welcome you to a virtual City of Bothell Planning Commission meeting. Tonight is June 3rd of 2020. It appears that all commissioners are present. And I do not believe we have had any public comments for this evening. Is that correct, Michael?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. There were no comments submitted by the 3:00 deadline today.
Okay, great. Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes from March 4th.
I would approve a minute, approval of minutes. This is Kevin here.
Approved by Kevin, Commissioner Kirnan. Seconded by Commissioner Kerd.
Hi, Chair.
All those in favor of the approval of the minutes from, oh.
I'll call role for that.
Oh, yes.
So we're gonna do this a little bit differently.
Oh, yes, we're doing it a little different tonight.
Since we're virtual, we need to make sure we get a little more on the record.
Got it.
Okay, so in no particular order, I'm just gonna call your name if you would please unmute your mic and say aye or nay for approval of the minutes. Kirnan?
Aye.
Thank you. Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderks?
I'm abstaining because I'm a member.
Thank you. Gustafson?
Epstein.
Thank you. Pystrip?
Aye.
Thank you. Kerd?
Aye.
Thank you. And Chair Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes to approve the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the minutes pass unanimously. And with that, we will move on into new business. And at this point in time, we have some new people here on the commission. Really happy to see these new faces. And I think we're gonna take a, to take a moment, I don't know how we, in what order we should go, but I guess I'll just start with myself. My name is David Vleet. I'm the current Chair of the Bothell Planning Commission, Bothell Planning Commission, and live in the kind of the downtown Bothell area in Lower Maywood. And also with that, I wanted to say, and we'll get to this here in the next part, I'm not gonna be seeking reelection for Chair or Vice Chair. I'm taking myself out of that category, so we'll be having some new people fill those two roles later in the meeting today. I guess with that, let's see, we could hand it over to, let's see, on my screen. How about Commissioner Kirnan?
Yeah, good evening. Kevin Kirnan here, and I believe my second year on the committee. The time is interesting right now. Retired civil engineer, long experience in county government, worked on a number of land use issues over my career, and enjoy serving on the commission now to do a little more public service. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. How about Sarah? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, everybody. I am your new member, one of your new members of the Planning Commission. I was a member of the Shorelines Board previously. I live in the Marway Hill security area, and I am CPA. Thank you all.
Commissioner Kerd?
Hi, my name is Carsten Kerd. I occupy Planning Commission Seat Number 4. I've been a commissioner for about a year now, and I live in the downtown Lower Maywood area. I am a geologist by training. I currently work throughout Puget Sound area in geologic reconnaissance, and I bring experience in critical areas and land use code to the commission. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Kerd. Commissioner Pystrip?
Good evening. My name's Brad Pystrip. I've been on the commission with Carsten like a few over a year now. Been a Bothell resident for about 17, 18 years. Business-wise, our company do a lot of public infrastructure, so naturally, as Bothell grows into the city, that we all kind of hope we wanted to see it, I could bring some expertise in that regard.
Thank you. Commissioner Alderks?
Everyone, my name is Jenny Alderks. I have lived in the Bothell area for about nine years now, formerly from California and, well, Seattle. But, so professionally and by training, I am an educator, and I've also served the community as a doula for the last eight years. And this is my first term on the Planning Commission. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioner Olson?
Hi, everybody. I'm Amanda Olson. I'm coming up on three decades in Bothell, because I grew up here. This is my second meeting, so not very long on the Planning Commission. And by trade, I am an account manager at a tech company.
Great, thank you. And I think that, is everyone, is that correct? I think I got everybody there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if the landmark, landmark members could introduce themselves as well.
Sure. Hey, buddy, this is Matt Keen, new member of the Landmark Preservation Board, newer member of the city of Bothell itself, worked here for about a year now. I've worked here for the last couple of years. My day job is I work for the newish State House member from this district, Vivina Doer. I'm her legislative assistant by day, so I'm excited about this new opportunity to serve as well. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Gratton, and I am new to the Landmark Preservation Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not sure if, hi, I'm not even sure what I'm doing here. I think I may have lost me. But, anyway, I am a resident of Bothell for the last 30 years, and I am a local realtor. And I'm looking forward to participating on the Landmark Preservation Board.
Thank you, Judy. Did I, looks like I have gotten everybody there, I believe. Yeah, we can go ahead and staff introductions. Let's start with Sarah Desamone.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sarah Desamone. I'm the city's Landmark Preservation Board Staff Liaison. I'm a historic preservationist by trade and architectural historian, so I just help the landmark board with all of their projects and their sort of admin stuff. Welcome to the new member.
Thank you. And it looks like we have a city attorney?
Hey, everyone. My name's Paul Burn. I'm the city attorney. I've been working for the city of Bothell since May of 2008, so just finished my 12th year. Started out as an intern in the prosecutor's office, and then was hired on after graduation on the civil side of things to do kind of half prosecution, half civil. And then when the former city attorney left, I became the interim city attorney, and I've been the full-fledged city attorney since May of 2017.
Thank you. How about the senior planner, Dave Boyd?
Thank you, and welcome to all the new members of both the commission and the landmark board. My name's Dave Boyd. Yesterday was my 15th year here at the city of Bothell. I am an architect by training and license, but I've been working in urban design and planning for the last 20, 25 years now, or gradually throughout my career, and look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Dave. Is that it for staff that we need to introduce, except for Community Development Director Cotterman, Mike Cotterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was hoping to stay anonymous, but I'll go ahead and introduce myself. I'm Mike Cotterman. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. I've been with the city of Bothell now for a little over two years. Have been doing planning work, I'm trained as a planner, for going on almost 40 years. So haven't found anything I like more, so I continue to do that work. I've really enjoyed working with everyone here in Bothell. It's just a tremendous community and doing some really exciting things from a planning standpoint. And very excited to see all the new members and the continuing members on the board and commission. So thank you all for being here this evening. If I could just add one announcement I forgot to mention at the beginning in terms of sort of the rules of the road here, there is a chat box that you have access to. I would ask that you not use the chat box, just to simplify things, because everything that goes into the chat box does become a public record, so we would have to preserve that. We can do that, but we prefer not to have to deal with that. And there really shouldn't be any side conversations or anything going on in any case. So please, please observe that. And again, thanks, everyone, for being here, and welcome to all the new members.
And so with that, we come to the next part of new business. The Community Development Director and I decided it might be best to do that near the end of the meeting, so we're actually gonna move the election of officers for Chair and Vice Chair. This will give people a little bit more time. We have some new people here. It'll give people some, some time to be able to listen to what some of the people have to say, and maybe get to know them a little bit better, for a few minutes at least, before deciding on how to move forward with the officers. So we'll be moving that, the election of the officers for those two positions to just after the study session, so herein not too long of a period of time. So thanks for holding tight on that. There's no public hearing this evening, no public meeting. And with that, we will go ahead and move on into the study session. Or actually, I'm sorry, we'll have a member orientation. And so, Michael, will you be leading that, or is it, okay. Michael Cotterman from Community Development will be leading the member orientation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm going to pull up some content here, hopefully, and have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll run through, and Sarah Desamone is also going to be participating in this. And Mr. Boyd, if there's anything glaring that I missed, please, please join in. Let me get this started. Okay, can everyone see the presentation? Okay, very good. So this is an abbreviated version of what we would normally do for our newest members. Typically, we do about an hour ahead of the first meeting that, that you attend in order to give you a little bit more background about the, the role of the board and commission, the, the different laws and regulations that we need to follow, sort of the procedural aspects of what we do, and then a little bit about the role of the staff as well. So I'm doing an abbreviated version of that. I will be stopping for questions as we go through this. And, and then if there are certain things that, at the end of this, if there are certain things you'd like to learn more about, you can either let me know this evening, or you can let me know sometime after the meeting, and we can schedule some additional study sessions in the future, then maybe do a little bit deeper dive into some of the different topics that we're gonna touch on this evening.
So, Michael, would you, if commissioners and, or commissioners have questions with regards to anything on here, do you want them to hold their questions until the end, or to go ahead and try to raise that question?
Maybe hold the questions until we stop. Well, I'll pause at different places.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for clarifying that. So just a little bit about what we're gonna cover this evening, we're gonna talk about really the context that, that we're working under as far as the planning work that we do. And some of this will pertain more to the Planning Commission, some might pertain more to the Preservation Board, the Landmark Preservation Board. And a good portion of it really comes into play for both, both groups, so, so we hope there's useful information here for everyone. I'm just gonna touch a little bit on the department mission to tell you a little bit more about who we are and the culture that we work under here in the city and in the Community Development Department. Talk some about the community vision and how that's demonstrated through the comprehensive plan. Then talk about the roles of the board, the commission, and the staff. Paul will talk a little bit about the legal aspects that we need to make sure you're aware of, and I think all of you have done some of the training on the, the two main things that he's going to talk about, but just to reinforce and give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And then I'll just touch upon the, the main items that we're working on for this year that we anticipate coming before the board and commission. And Sarah and I will talk a little bit about both of those things as well. So in terms of the planning context, this is a map of the four county region. So we are part of the Puget Sound Regional Council, which is the four county planning agency. And the reason that's important is they develop a regional plan that we also work under. We start, if you think of this as a pyramid, and we start with the base of the pyramid being the State Growth Management Act that was originally passed in 1991 and has been amended, I think, every year since, and it's close to 30 years old now, and I've been here for most of that, so I, it's been around a long time. That really is the foundation of what we use in terms of our planning, not just in Bothell, but throughout the state of Washington, and particularly in the, in the Puget Sound region. So that's, that has requirements in there and different optional elements that we have to include in our plans. It tells us how often we have to update the plan, what needs to be included, and the other things that we need to do to amend that plan on an annual basis. So that's a very important starting point for us as, as we do the planning here in Bothell. Building off of that is the Puget Sound Regional Council, which includes King, Snohomish, Pierce, and Kitsap Counties. They develop a regional plan, and these are always 20-year plans when we talk about planning and comprehensive plans. We try to look 20 years into the future and create a vision of what we, we want that area to be within that time period. So they develop policies that are a little more general in nature and apply to all four of those counties and all of the cities and unincorporated areas in those counties. Those are called multi-county planning policies. We have to be consistent with those when we do our local plans. That also has to abide by the requirements of the State Growth Management Act, so everything is building on that base. The next level up are the countywide planning policies that are done by the individual counties. And in our case, because we are split between two counties, King and Snohomish, we have to, we have to track what's happening in both of those counties as far as their planning and their planning efforts and their planning policies, and make sure that our plan is consistent with, with those policies as well. So the peak of the pyramid then is our local plan, and that's the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. And as I said, we have to be consistent with every other layer that's below us with the policies that are in those other documents. The, the colors that you see on the map here, the four counties, the white area is what's the designated urban growth area. So there is a line, the urban growth boundary, that delineates between the area that is designated for urban-level growth and the area that is designated to remain rural. And that could be resource lands, or it could simply be very low density. The main difference being the provision of urban services. So water, sewer, stormwater, and a higher level of other services, both government services as well as business services, exist within that urban growth boundary. And part of the reason for that is to make sure that we preserve those rural areas, we preserve those natural areas, and that we have more efficient use then of the infrastructure, the roads, the utilities, and everything that we have within that urban area. It's much more efficient to serve a smaller area than a much larger area. This has been in place, the counties designate those lines with, working with the cities. And in Bothell, we happen to be on the edge of, of the urban growth boundary for Snohomish County, not for King County, but for Snohomish County. So we're one of those edge cities in that respect. The blue are designated regional growth centers under the Puget Sound Regional Council's vision. They call their plan Vision. Currently, it's Vision 2040. That's in the process of being updated and adopted later this year. That'll be Vision 2050, so that's looking out through 2050 and planning for that. Generally, where that growth will occur, the types of transportation service that will be provided to those areas. Those areas that are in blue are designated as regional growth centers under that regional plan. Bothell has one of those. There are 29 altogether. Ours is the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. And as most of you know, we're in the process of updating the plan for Canyon Park, and you're gonna get a briefing on that at the next Planning Commission meeting, and we're working toward adoption of that later on this summer. The green areas are manufacturing industrial centers. These are also areas that are primarily focused on capturing job growth, and they are, they do not have a residential component to them for the most part. They're really more focused on the employment aspect of it. We do not have one of those in Bothell, but you can see there, I think we're up to 10 or 11 of those now, region-wide. So the local, a little bit more about the local context then for Bothell. So as I mentioned, we are divided between King and Snohomish Counties. The dividing line is right about here, if you can see my arrow. So everything south of that is King County, everything to the north is Snohomish County. You'll notice there's an area outside of the city limit line that's in the shaded area with the dashed line around it. That is our potential annexation area, or as it's referred to in Snohomish County, the municipal urban growth area, or MOOGA. That is the, the area that we could annex in the future to increase the size and population of the city of Bothell. So that is designated specifically for future annexation by the city of Bothell, no other city. Currently, it is within the unincorporated portion of Snohomish County, so they receive their urban services from the county. One of the basic principles of the, of the Growth Management Act is that urban services should be provided by cities, not by counties. So it's anticipated that eventually all of this area will become part of the city of Bothell. We have annexed virtually everything that was designated for us in the King County portion of the city. We are a little over 8,800 acres right now, or about 13 and 1/2 square miles within our existing city limits. Our population estimate from the Office of Financial Management, the state office that does those estimations, is getting close to 47,000. We, that's for the 2019 estimate. We will get the 2020 estimate sometime this month, and I anticipate that it will be probably closer to 48.5. That's my, that's my guess. We'll let you know how close I got to that. Population-wise, we're split about 60, 40 between King and Snohomish County with the larger portion of the population being in King County. Area-wise, it's actually more like 55, 45, with a little bit more in the King County side, although, as you can see, once we annex the area in Snohomish County, the Snohomish portion will be larger than King County. And you can see the land area that we have in King County there in the annexation area. So if we combine those, once we fully annex, we're looking at almost 19 and 1/2 square miles and a population estimate for capacity at least of over 64,000. That will go up based on when we update our plan next. There'll be additional growth that will be allocated to our city as well as to our urban growth area. So you can see that will make a significant difference in the city once we annex that. So I'm gonna stop at that point and see, I'm gonna try something a little new here. I'm gonna stop sharing, so we can get everybody back on the screen for a second and see if there are any questions about any of that information so far.
Looks like we're fine.
We're good to go. Okay. Now comes the tricky part. See if I can get it back on the screen quickly. There we go. So in terms of our department mission, it really is important to us, we are the Community Development Department, and is something we talk about in the department, is the fact that there's a lot of focus on the development aspect of what we do, because we process permit applications, we do land use review, but that's just one portion of it. That's the development side. We also have the community side, and that is, how do we make this, you know, continue to make this a, a great community for everyone who lives here and who will live here in the future? So we do that in collaboration with the residents that we have, the businesses that we have, as well as the colleagues in other departments and other agencies. So we work with the county staff in both King and Snohomish Counties. We also coordinate with our neighboring cities and those staffs, because a lot of planning issues don't stop at the border. There's overlap, there's interrelated issues that we have to work on. And we're promoting a community of Bothell that celebrates the history, embraces the present, and envisions the future. And that's important because that really captures the scope of what we do in the department. Planning, comprehensive planning in particular is really future-oriented, that 20-year planning horizon, looking out to see how, how much growth we're expecting and how we're going to, how we're going to accommodate that growth in the most positive way. The history is a lot of obviously what the Landmark Preservation Board does, but that's not just preserving buildings or sites or, or memories of the past. That's part of what defines us as a community, and that's really also about embracing our present and the sense of community that we have in Bothell, in part because of the history that we, that we celebrate. So that's, all three of those are very important as we, as we do the work of the department. And the mission, we carry out our mission, those are the values that, that we hold dear in our department, and we always strive to make sure that when we're doing our work, especially when we're working with applicants, with the community, that we're, that we're really practicing those values and employing those in everything that we do. The community vision is articulated in the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan. It is a 20-year plan. It's updated about every eight years, although the date keeps changing. Our next update is due in 2024. The last one was done in 2015. And depending on how much things have changed, there may be a lot of work that's done to update it, or maybe just a little bit. In the case of the 2015 amendment or update, and Dave can correct me on this, I think it was, it was really more of just bringing it up to date. There weren't any major shifts in terms of the overall vision for the community and what we're looking at in the future. At one of the, one of the Future Planning Commission meetings, I'd like to spend a little bit of time really talking about what's in the comprehensive plan and what that vision is and how it's articulated, but I'm not, I wasn't gonna go into that this evening. In addition to looking at the city overall, we have 17 sub-areas within the city, so places like Canyon Park, like downtown, those are probably two that are the best known, but we have 15 others that help to identify different geographic areas of the city, but also areas that maybe have a little bit different character, a little bit different identity than, than the overall city. And then, of course, the boards and commissions are an important part of that whole planning effort and articulating that vision, not only in terms of doing the review and making recommendations to the city council, but also in engaging the community in the discussion about what that vision needs to be and whether it changes. So we make that vision a reality through several means, primarily through, at least in our department, primarily through regulation and development review. That means that anything that comes into the city that's a proposal to develop a project, whether it's a new project or an addition, that comes through the department, goes through a development review for land use, for building. We look at landscaping, we look at parking, we look at, in some cases, building design. If it is a structure that is on the inventory, and Sarah will talk about this a little bit more, it gets a little bit additional review. But we administer a lot of the regulation that has to do with that. And there are also the capital investments. These are things like investments in parks, investments in streets, or utilities, that really help to, to make sure that we're providing the level of service to the entire city. So under that, I'm not gonna go into all of these, but you'll see that there are different roles that the Board and Commission plays in these. Planning Commission primarily is advisory to the city council, so you're, you don't have a final decision on things, but your advice is very important and is weighed heavily by the, the city council. The board actually does have a limited authority in development review, and Sarah will talk a little bit about that. So there are some things where you have an advisory role, but you also have a little bit more authority. And then getting public input, the Board and Commission are really two of the main tools that we have to really gather that public input. So the, the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, it really articulates that vision in terms of the policies, the narrative that's in there, the maps and illustrations that we have. It, it's, it's designed to really describe the future that's desired by the community. There are a lot of policies in there that provide the basis for the regulations that we then develop, the financial decisions that are made by the city council in terms of what capital projects to fund, and other decisions by the council in terms of implementing that plan. So it is the key policy document. I'd say the, the comprehensive plan and the city budget are really the two key policy documents that the city has. Just a real quick example here, we have, on the left, we have a land use map of the Maywood-Beckstrom Hill subarea. So you can see each subarea has, has its own land use map, and then on the right, we have the zoning map. If you look closely, you'll notice that they're virtually identical. And that's because we do the land use plan through the comprehensive plan, we lay out the policies that go with those particular designations. Then under the zoning, we get into the specific requirements, development requirements that apply when someone comes in to develop on those properties. So the future land use map gives us a sense of what we want to see in that area, the general types of uses, general level of development, whether it's density or amount of commercial development, and then the detail. Then under the zoning, we get into the specific requirements, development requirements, that apply when someone comes in to develop on those properties. So the future land use map gives us a sense of what we want to see in that area, the general types of uses, general level of development, whether it's density or amount of commercial development, and then the details, the specifics of that for specific development is through the zoning map and the zoning code. So I think I'm going to stop right there again and see if there are any questions about any of that information so far. I've looked to see if there are glazed eyes.
Looks like Jenny has one. Go ahead, Jenny.
Thank you. So you mentioned that the Imagine Bothell Plan was updated in 2017. Is there a planned update coming up at some point, and do you know the date of when that would be?
Yes, the last update was in 2015. I apologize if I said the wrong year. So it's been in effect now for about five years, and the state tells us when we have to do the next update, and we are in line to do it by 2024. So it has to be updated by June of 2024. That was just changed last year in the legislature. Previously, it was due in '23. So all of the cities in King, Pierce, basically the four counties in the Puget Sound Regional Council area are all due to update their plans by June of 2024. Other parts of the state are on a little different schedule. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
And just a real quick add-on to that, so we will start that process most likely about probably the early part of 2023. It's about a year and a half process because it involves a lot of public engagement to really have discussions about what the vision says, do we want to change the vision, refining the policies, and talking about what it would take to achieve that vision going forward. Any other questions? Okay. We'll go back to the presentation. So in terms of, this is starting to get into the roles of the Board and Commission a little bit. The Planning Commission really has, there are about five, there are five titles in the Bothell Municipal Code, or BMC, that when we amend those, we bring those to the Planning Commission for your review, your input, and then your recommendation, your findings and recommendation to the city council before they adopt any amendments to the code. And that's Title 11, which is really the administration of the regulations and how we carry that out. Those are some of our procedures that provide the guidance for us to administer and process those permits. Zoning, obviously, is an important one. This is where the regulations are that talk about amount of parking, amount of landscaping, setbacks for buildings, heights of buildings, the types of uses that can go in those different zones. So those all come to the Planning Commission. Last year, for example, you had a Comprehensive Plan, I'm sorry, it wasn't a Comprehensive Plan amendment, it was a zoning code amendment that Mr. Boyd brought to you regarding nursing homes, and whether or not to allow those in another zone that they were not currently allowed in. So that's the type of zoning change that can come to the Planning Commission. Also, the Environmental Chapter, which includes our critical areas ordinances. Some of those overlap with the work of the Shorelines Board, and in those cases, wherever there's an overlap with another board or commission, there's a requirement for the Planning Commission to consult with that board and commission before making a formal recommendation to the city council. Likewise, subdivisions, plats, preliminary plats, final plats, as well as short plats, small lot subdivisions, those all go through, the regulations go through the Planning Commission. The subdivisions themselves go through the hearing examiner process. And then the Transportation Chapter, this is one of the changes we made last year, really there are just certain aspects of that that come to the Planning Commission where it's policy related, or it relates specifically to some of the land use aspects of the Comprehensive Plan. Things like the transportation impact fee, for example, would not come to the Planning Commission because that's not within your purview. And then you see several things that go, one that goes to the Shorelines Board, that is the shoreline management portion of the code, that's specific to the Shorelines Board. These others go directly to the city council, and then Title 22 is really all about the Landmark Preservation Board and their roles, their responsibilities and authority. And we've just done some significant updates to that that we had hoped to have taken to the city council already. The board has been working on this for a few years now, and we are hoping to take that back to the council for their final action in July. So there are quite a few changes to that, and I'm sure Sarah will go over that with the new members of the board at the appropriate time when you get to that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about the landmark.
Actually, one quick thing on that, Michael. I wanted to point out, thank you for that very good review of all those things. You did a great job on that. And thanks for touching on subdivisions. That's something that's very interesting in that there is a hearing examiner process, and so many people think that Planning Commission has much more to do with individual subdivisions, but that actually doesn't go through us.
That's a very good point, and I should have stressed that a little bit more. The hearing examiner does hear anything related to subdivisions as well as conditional use permits. So the commission really doesn't touch any permitting or any development review at all. And the things that don't go to the hearing examiner are administrative, so those are decisions that are made by the staff and then signed off on by myself as the director.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for that. That's good additional information. So with that, Sarah, if you would like to talk about the next couple of slides.
All right. Well, the Landmark Board has seven members, just like the Planning Commission, I believe. One of those always needs to be a professional, like an architect or historian or something of that nature. I provide the staff support, as I mentioned earlier. I help with the meeting minutes and things like that, and sort of the schedule, and getting the agendas written, and the applicants all organized and everything. They typically meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:00, except for August. Occasionally, very rarely, they will have an extra meeting for some reason if something comes up that's sort of urgent, but there tends to not be a lot of urgent issues with the Landmark Preservation Board. So part of what the board does is to maintain a register of landmarks, and what we have is the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks here, and it's a voluntary list of all the properties that are really significant to the history of Bothell, and it's something that the property needs to qualify for it, and the property owner has to agree to it and sign a contract agreeing that they will maintain the property as it is and, you know, not completely remodel it. So part of your responsibility is to review applications for that when they come up, and then also to review any changes with certificates of appropriateness. So if somebody comes in and wants to, you know, change all the windows in their historic registered property, then you guys get to take a look and see, is it appropriate, you know, does it work for the property? You also have a, what's called a Historic Resources Inventory, and it's a very large list of all the properties in Bothell that are potentially significant. So typically, it's everything that's between 40 and 50 years old at least. It's everything that has some level of integrity and some level of significance. We don't just put everything that hits the 50-year mark on there, but we put as much as we can that has some sort of significance. And it's sort of your responsibility to direct me to update that periodically. So right now, we're working on a large update of everything that was built kind of post-World War II. You also do from promoting of preservation through like articles, brochures. You, a few years ago, the Landmark Board did a book called Bothell Then and Now, and it's kind of become like the primer of Bothell history, which is great. I think they've had a few short tours and things in the past, but recently haven't done anything like that. There are options, though, for things like that. And next slide. Okay. So my role, I've kind of touched on some of it, just sort of the administrative part of it. Another part of what I do is to carry out the projects that the board chooses in their work program. So right now, they've chosen the Historic Inventory that I'm working on, and they've also, this year, they've got me writing two landmark nominations, which we also had a grant to cover part of that cost. And, you know, each year, they come up with some different things that they prioritize as something that needs to get done. So we recently did a survey of downtown Bothell to a Main Street, so that was also helpful. So another thing I do is I do some staff review of demolition permit reviews, or applications, excuse me. When something comes in that is a historic building, it's on Historic Resources Inventory, then I take a peek at that and make sure that they are following the Title 22 processes on that, which we'll talk about individually. I also sometimes do historic nominations for the Bothell Register, the National Register, and of course, the inventory. And I do occasionally prepare brochures and interpretive information for you guys and for the public, and we also have applied for several grants in the past few years, so that's another thing that I work on.
Okay. I'm going to stop there and see if anyone has any questions for Sarah, certainly from the Landmark Board, but any of the Planning Commissioners as well.
So, Sarah, you said-
Landmark Board members will have a more detailed organization later. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, I kind of jumped in there. So, what was I going to say? So basically, so historic buildings in the city, it's nice you mentioned, so that's basically not mandatory. The person has to apply for it, correct, somewhere along the way historically?
If they want to be on the actual Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks, and that only has 16 properties, so it's one of those things that you have to really want to be on there and agree to the terms.
Great, thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about the benefits of getting on the register?
Sure, yeah, there are quite a few benefits. There are several programs that offer financial incentives, especially in King County. In King County, they have what's called the, I'm drawing a blank on the name, but there's a grant for preserving historic buildings in King County, and it's offered to private ownership, so also, you know, your house. You can get it for your house as opposed to just like an organization that applies for a grant. And you have to be listed on the local register to get that, so up to $30,000. It's a really good program, and we actually just recently, the Bothell Driller's Building, he was just recently listed on the register, and they got a grant to do their roof, so that shows what it can do. There's also the Special Development Program, which essentially can reduce your property tax liability for a period of up to 10 years, and it can be very significant depending on the property. Sometimes it doesn't pan out, but often it's very significant, especially in accounting with, you know, really high property values like here. And then the last thing is federal tax credits, and those are a little more difficult to get. You have to be listed or eligible for listing on the National Register, which is a different program that I don't want to get into here, but that one is essentially, which is a little bit higher level of significance and less focused on Bothell history and more focused on national history.
And I should mention, Sarah mentioned she's a consultant to the city, but we think of her as staff, but she's technically under contract to the city, but we only have 10 hours of her time a week. So it is a limited amount of time that's available to provide support for, not only for the Landmark Board, but she also provides support to the staff as projects come into the city that either are on the inventory or maybe on the local register. So she's a tremendous resource for the staff as well as the Landmark Board, and we rely on her quite a bit, but she is limited in her time, unfortunately. We do augment that with some with grants, but very happy to have Sarah as part of that, part of the team. So with that, let me just touch quickly on the Planning Commission, again, seven members, and it's nice that we're back up to full membership again. This is some changes that were made in the bylaws recently, so meeting the first and third Wednesdays of most months. We do not meet typically in August, or usually have the second meeting in December is usually canceled as well. We can have additional meetings if those are called, special meetings that are called by the Planning Commission. This is more of a procedural item as far as the Planning Commission because it is important that we know whether we're going to have a quorum. This has been a little bit of a challenge, sometimes in the past been the case everywhere that I've ever worked is making sure that we have a quorum, particularly for Planning Commission. Everyone's busy, but it's also important that we have good attendance at the meetings to make sure that we can do the business that needs to get done and that everyone is hearing the information. So if you do know that you're not going to be able to make a meeting, we do track that, and we like to know in advance, as far in advance as possible. So for example, if you know you're going to be gone the third Wednesday in September, please let me and the chair know now, and we will put that on the calendar, and we will know you're not going to be there then unless you tell us that that has changed. And then if we see that we're getting close to not having a quorum, we do a quick check just to make sure that the people that did say they will be there are really going to be able to make it, so that we're not wasting everyone's time by showing up and not being able to have a meeting. So I've said enough about that. As I mentioned prior, in a prior slide, the Planning Commission is advisory to the city council. You are an important advisory body to the city council, and they do take your recommendations very seriously and consider those. That's a part of every presentation that we do to the city council as staff. We, generally, we take just the Planning Commission's recommendation, or we will say this is a recommendation from the commission and the staff. There are rare occasions when the staff may have a different recommendation from the Planning Commission, and we would certainly note that. We would let you know before we took that to the council, and we would also make sure that the council understood that there was a different recommendation from the Planning Commission and why there is a difference in those recommendations. But again, that's very rare. The role of the Planning Commission is really to take public comment, consider that, public comment and testimony, and I make a distinction there because public comment can occur at any time, in any form. You may get emails. We may share something that we've received as staff that came to us directly, not to the Planning Commission. We may have public meetings outside of the Planning Commission meetings. We may have open houses. We'll collect and compile that information, provide that to you as public comment. When you have a public hearing, it is a formal occasion and you take public testimony. That is part of the official record, so that if there ever is any question about what was a decision that was made and why that was made, that we go back to the record, and that is the public hearing and the testimony that was received. So that's why I make that distinction. It's an important difference there. You review all the staff reports, we hope that we provide to you. We understand sometimes that's not always possible. Then you deliberate on those issues, and it's a, my experience with this commission is that it's a very good deliberative body. There's a lot of very good discussion, very respectful, a lot of give and take, understanding different perspectives and different concerns that are raised through that. And then vote on a recommended action that goes to the city council, and we do have findings and conclusions that we prepare as part of that recommendation. We will talk to you primarily about the two things that you do will be plan amendments. Those are changes to the Comprehensive Plan itself. There's a formal process that's dictated by state law that we follow to do that. There are also code amendments that change the Bothell Municipal Code and those titles that I mentioned earlier, and we, those are handled a little bit differently. We can do those pretty much as they need to be done. The Comprehensive Plan amendments can only be done once per year, and they have to be done as a group. So if we have three of them, we have to do them all at the same time. We can't do one and then come back and do another one later on that year. So as the staff, we are really the resource for the commission. We do not work for you, we work for the city manager, and obviously, we, you know, it's very important that we are also working for the city council, but our primary responsibility and direction is from the city manager. And then we also go to the city council every year with a docket that says, these are the things that we have heard from the Planning Commission. There are some priorities that the commission may put on there. There are some priorities that the city council has. There are certain things that we are required to do by state law or federal law. So we put all of that into a docket that we take to the city council early in the year, and that becomes our work program. And I'll talk about that in just a second. We handle all the meeting logistics as best we can. Sometimes they don't always work as we had hoped. We prepare the issues and alternatives analysis. We always try to give the Planning Commission information on what the different options are that we have explored as staff, and we may have discarded some of those along the way, but we like to let you know, these are the things we've looked at, this is the direction that we are recommending that we go at this point, this is why, and then we're looking for the commission to tell us, okay, or we'd really like you to consider this option as well. And then oftentimes, we will make a recommendation to the Planning Commission as part of that process, toward the end of that process. We will prepare draft policy and regulatory language, the policy language being for the Comprehensive Plan, regulatory being for the code, and again, we prepare the findings and the recommendations at your direction for council consideration. So at this point, I will turn it over to Paul to talk a little bit about the Open Public Meetings Act, or the OPMA, as well as the public records requirements that are, these are really critical to the operation, not just in terms of making sure that we have good transparency for the public, but also just to make sure that we're being good stewards of the public trust in providing all information to the public at timely points in the process. So with that, Paul?
Thank you. Okay, so just to kind of give a preface, preface my presentation, my apartment is a little bit warm, so I have the window open. There are helicopters and sirens that you may hear periodically. You may hear a mortar shell go off every once in a while. If it becomes a distraction, just let me know, and I'll be happy to close the window and just kind of get through it. I live in Capital, in Seattle. I live in Capital, in Seattle. There's currently a lot of action going on. So with that, I know you guys have taken the online trainings about the OPMA and the Record Protection Act and the Public Records Act. And as Michael said, the OPMA is really a process. For those of you that have seen or heard of the musical Hamilton, when they talk about they wanted to be in the room where it happened, that's not how we do business. We don't do things behind closed doors. There's only rare exception when we get to shield what we do from the public. And so the idea behind the OPMA is really that everything is discussed out in public so that the public can see the deliberative process that the commissioners and board members take in reaching their decision. Kind of the key of this is that, as Michael said, you know, you need to have four people in order to have a quorum to do business. And so you are allowed to talk amongst each other, but the magic number is four. If you are speaking to three other people on your board or commission about an item, you are violating the OPMA, because that then constitutes a voting block that could then control where the meeting goes, and it's inappropriate for you to have any of those side conversations outside of a view of the public. So for newer commissioners and board members, what we often, what often occurs is that someone will take you under their wing, kind of show you the ropes, and act as a sounding board, so when you have questions, you can go to that person. If you disagree with what that person says, that's totally fine, and you are allowed to reach out to only one other person. And this is per topic. So if you have seven items on your agenda, you want to discuss those seven items with two different council, two different board or commissioners on each of those seven items, you are allowed to do that, but you have to be very, very particular about who you speak to, about what. And so my general advice is, talk to maybe one or two other people, have like a buddy system. And whether you agree or disagree with them, you can kind of use them as a sounding board, get your ideas out, see how they can formulate your decisions in your mind. And then when you go into a formal meeting, the three of you don't have a voting block, and so you then have to engage in discussion and try to convince the other commissioners to see your point of view and vote in the same way in which you are intending to vote. So that's kind of the easy version of it. One of the things about the OPMA that people have tried to skirt in the past is that they will have, kind of like I said, you'll have a discussion with one person, and then you go to somebody else and have that discussion with that one person. And they're like, hey, I only spoke to one person at a time. And that's what we call the serial meeting. So if you are, again, talking to more than two people about any single item, you have engaged in a serial meeting. You cannot meet as a block of four, and you cannot have four individual conversations. It has to be just the limit of two other people at a maximum. Anything beyond that is a violation. It's subject to recall. The city will get sued, and I will have to defend you, which is fine. That's what I'm here for, but that is a tremendous amount of staff time. And so what I've always told people is, they said, oh, I don't want to bother you. Absolutely bother me. Bother me every day. Because when you give me a call or shoot me an email, I can respond to it usually within 10 or 15 minutes. That is time well spent to avoid 160 hours minimum defending a lawsuit. Those are generally bigger stakes, high stress, and they have the potential for subjecting the city's liability. And so I encourage you to reach out to me as often as you wish in order to ask any question, to see if anything is focused at it, if you're doing things. If you're just nervous, you're like, I don't want to make a mistake. That is what I want to hear. I'm happy to take your call, and I'm happy to respond to your emails in order to avoid going down that path. The second part of the presentation is about the Public Records Act. And as it, the appearance of fairness is only a quasi, legally is only when you engage in a quasi judicial decision-making, decision-making event. And that is, you need to, very much like a judge, you need to disclose any prior knowledge you have, any prior contacts that you have. And the conflicts of interest, that legally is very, very narrow. You are not allowed to vote in favor of something that is going to put money directly into your pocket. And so for an example of this, with the City Council, Mayor Olson works for a company, an engineering firm, that does review work for the city. So when the time came for Mayor Olson to vote on whether or not we should approve that contract, he decided to abstain. Now legally, he didn't have to, because he wasn't, he just works for the company. And so if the company, the city were to give that company a contract, it may be that Mayor Olson never even worked on the project that we have farmed out to that company. But out of a respect for just openness, he disclosed, hey, I work for this company, and even though it's not technically a conflict of interest, he just he abstained anyway. So there is that kind of dividing line. If he were an owner in the company or a proprietor of the company and got a share, then he is mandated by law to recuse himself. If he does not, he is subject to recall, and then he could be removed from office. He didn't do that. He took the right path, but I just want to make sure that there's that dividing line. My advice will always be that even if you have a potential issue where you have, you're a little bit too close, even if it's not a legal standard, it's always better to let the public know and say, hey, just so we know if we're talking about this item, I have ties to this item through these people. I still think I can be unbiased. I still think I can be fair-minded, but I did want to disclose that, just so everybody knows. It is always up to you whether or not you want to recuse yourself or abstain from the vote. Disclosure is always under the OPMA, always heavily favored. So moving on to the Public Records Act. As in the bullet point, all records pertaining to city business are subject to the public records disclosure, including emails between board and commission members and staff. The reason that we insist that you use your boffelwad.gov email address is that we can then search it. In the past, we had board members and commissioners using their own personal email addresses in order to do city business. And then when we would get public records requests, we would have to reach out to every board and commissioner member, ask him or her if they have done any dealings on their personal email account. And then whether or not the answer was yes or no, they had to sign an affidavit. They had to review and sign an affidavit saying that they did have records or they did not have records. And if we, the council does not want you to do that. We have staff for that. And by using the boffelwad.gov email address, we are able to search it, and you won't even know whether or not a public records request comes in. The thing about the word "record" is a record, under the definition of the Public Records Act, is pretty much anything. It is any writing, any photograph, any voicemail. It is basically, it's anything. Anything you do for the city is going to be a public record, except for your spoken word, because there's no recitation of that. If you have a discussion with one of the board members or commissioners, and you then take notes, your notes are a public record, because it pertains to city business. The flip side of that is the Records Retention Act, and that governs how long we have to keep those records. If you are speaking with a board member or commissioner, and you simply say, oh, yeah, I'll make a note to myself to call you back in three days, that doesn't have any retention. It's not substantive. It's transitory. It's a little note to yourself. Once you've made that note and you call the person back in three days, you can destroy that record. Even though it's a public record, it doesn't have any retention value. But if during that three-day window, we get a public records request, we're going, it says, for all records associated with commission or commissioner business or board member business, we're going to have to email you to ask if you have any notes that you have taken related to city business. And you're going to have to reply with, reply with yes or no. If it's yes, we're going to ask that you scan them and turn them over to us, so we can review them to see if they meet the standards for disclosure. Generally, in Washington, they favor open disclosure. Everything we have, we have to give out. It, as Michael said, increases the public trust in open government. They get to see what's going on. There are a few exceptions that rarely apply to the board and commissions, one of which, though, is the attorney-client privilege. So if you email me and say, I have a question for you, that document is in all likelihood not going to be released, because you are asking me to give you legal advice in my capacity as the city attorney. If you ask me something like, hey, I saw you at the Fourth of July parade. What did you think of it? That is going to be disclosed, because I'm not presenting you any legal advice. So it's not just, in the past, it was anytime you sent any email to an attorney, there was attorney-client privilege, the entire email was exempt from disclosure. That's no longer the case. It is only those aspects of the email that relate to a specific legal question or a response to that legal question. And so that's, that's kind of the overview. Those are always the things that I really want to always stress to people. You can find my contact information online. You can always contact your staff representative through your board or commission in order to get my contact information. But we need to make sure that you're complying with these. On a couple of occasions in the past, I've had to send out emails asking people to stop a certain behavior. One of the most common ones that you will see from staff members is we will email you something that says, for information only, please do not reply to all. If you hit reply to all, you are sending an email to every other member of the commission or board, and you are engaging in an illegal OPMA violation, because you are now having a meeting. You are engaging in discussion of an item or maybe deliberation. And that isn't being done in the public view. So it's a, whenever we send out agendas, if you have any questions, you need to hit simply reply. You ask your question to your staff liaison. The staff liaison then collects all of the questions from each of the individual board members and commissioners, and then will produce one email saying, in response to the agenda, here are the questions that I received, and here are the answers to those questions. And that way, it is for everybody to see. So reply all is not your friend. That is the quickest way to violate OPMA. If you type something in an email, and it's really derogatory about someone, and you're like, hey, I don't want that to be public, so you delete that, the answer is no, because it is a public record if it's relating to city business. Regardless of how embarrassing it might be, regardless of whether you regret sending it right away, it's a public record, and embarrassment isn't a reason to prevent disclosure. So those are kind of the big, major points. I don't want to belabor them too much, but again, as we leave, don't hit reply all. Call me if you have any questions. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. I won't call on people, sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Kiernan?
You're still on mute.
Took me a moment to unmute there. Two quick questions or perhaps points. So I take notes in every meeting, and at home regarding them, and these are all required. So just-
They are.
And I have a separate notebook. Everything I have is right here, so there's that.
That is, that is definitely-
A question, or maybe clarification regarding technical social interactions. So if we're about to end up in the same establishment after a meeting, some comments about how to proceed?
Yes, so you are allowed to-
But you're muted.
I'm muted? Okay. Yeah, you are allowed to be humans. You are allowed to interact with each other on a social level. You do need to be aware of the public perception of it, so that if four of you go out after a meeting to one of the restaurants or bars in the area and have a beer or two, whatever it is, or a snack, you're allowed to do that. You need to not talk about business. And even if you're like, oh, let's talk about what your holiday plans are. Let's talk about our children. Let's talk about our pets. You always have to be aware of the public perception, so that now that you are a public official, you are on, you're on the internet for people to view. If they see four of you in a location together, they may very well say, question whether or not you were talking about city business. And you can just say, no, we were talking about X, Y, and Z. Or, no, we weren't talking about business. I can't remember what we were talking about. It was just general chit-chat. But you just need to be aware that that may be the public perception, that someone may believe that you are engaging in that behavior, even though you are not. But to go back to your actual question, you are allowed to engage in social interactions with other members of the boards and commissions, but you just have to be aware of the public perception. You cannot talk about business.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah? Thank you. To follow up on Commissioner Kiernan's question, are there any guidelines for social media if members of a commission happen to be on Boffel Community Facebook? Is it all right, as long as we're not all discussing the same topic?
So that is, that one is a little trickier. There was a recent case in Chiwale. I can actually send you an email with a little bit more specific guidance. The short answer is, if you are acting as a community member, and you are just discussing an issue that relates to Boffel, again, you're allowed to be a human outside of your role as a commissioner or board member. You cannot act on behalf of the city and say, I am posting this because the commission asked me to. That is not something that you, as an individual board member or commissioner, should be doing. Anything that is official, an official notice, an official comment, is going to come from either the staff liaison or another member of the city staff. But you are still allowed to have your opinion, and you're still allowed to say, listen, I'm on the commission. I'm on the board, and this is what I think we should do. That is still your own personal opinion, and you are allowed to freely engage in that. It is only when you start kind of crossing a line of, as in my role as commissioner, this is what we should do. And you, and you, the blurry line, and it's a gray area, but if you cross the line of acting, if it appears that you're acting on behalf of the commission or on behalf of the city, as opposed to you engaging in thoughtful discussion as a member of the community, again, it's a blurry line. But we really try to have you focus on, this is me, this is my opinion, this is what I think we should do, versus, I'm speaking on behalf of the city, and the city believes we should do this, or the commission believes we should do this, or the board. The designation information on behalf of the board, commission, or city needs to come from a staff person. Amanda?
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know if you guys are board members or commissioners, and so I'm just, I apologize for calling you by your first name and not by your title.
I'm more comfortable with my first name. It feels very formal when I'm called Commissioner Olson. My question is kind of dovetailing on the same trend. So let's say we're on social media, there's one post, and three other commissioners have already commented with their opinion. As just individuals, nobody's on a very red line and saying, this is what you Boffel thinks. But am I, is it going to break any rules if more commissioners weigh in? Should we try to keep a watch for that?
You do need to be aware of it. There's a pump fast rule, because again, you, you wear to ask simultaneously. You are a commissioner and a resident. And so, but you, you do need to be aware, this happened a few years ago with a couple council members, where there was, on the Boffel Community page, there was an issue being discussed, and two of them started to kind of go at it. I think a third member, a third council member chimed in, and I was just like, please do not let a fourth person enter this, because it just makes it messy. So you can, you can, but as you said, you do need to be aware of the optics of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael?
So Paul, I have a quick question, just in terms of us-
You're on mute. I can't hear you.
I'm on microphone.
Can't hear you.
Really?
I can't hear you.
You should be able to.
I did read your lips. You said, really?
I did. Well, I'm afraid if I unmute, I'm going to have feedback.
Nope. Not a word. Not a word. There you go. There you go.
Yeah, but this is going to, this is going to create feedback. Never mind. Sure.
What was your question?
My question is-
One second.
This is for the chair. He's going to try to relay this. My question is, let's say a member of the board, and this could apply to the board or the commission.
Member of the board or commission?
No, we can't hear either mic or David.
Okay, we have a technician working on it. Technician working on it.
Technician working on it.
Oh, there you are.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Still not. You heard me earlier, though, right?
No.
You heard me earlier.
You heard me earlier, didn't you?
Yeah. You said, we're working on it. Then I heard that, but that was just one tiny little phrase.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Got it. Yeah, I didn't, I muted those. Got it. Okay. You should be able to hear me now.
There you are.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
My fault. Technical-
That's okay.
Me and technology. You know how that works. So my question, if I'm a board or commission member, and let's say my brother-in-law is-- if I'm on the Landmark Board, let's say my brother-in-law is requesting a demolition permit on an historic structure, and that's going to financially benefit him, doesn't necessarily directly benefit me. Likewise, if I'm on a planning commission, and I'm hearing a rezone request from my sister-in-law, who's going to benefit tremendously by being able to upzone the property and sell it for something a lot more, in that situation, if it's not directly benefiting me financially, do I have a responsibility? Is it more about perception, or is there an actual conflict of interest there?
There is no conflict. It is-- that is the dirty world of politics that you just entered. So we had a number of years ago with the Fitzgerald subdivision, two of the council members actually lived in the subdivision, and there were calls for their abstention and recusal because of where they lived. And the way that you have to look at it is, if they had been doing like a site-specific rezone just for their property, then that is when they-- when they would have to recuse themselves. But because it was for an entire area, and because it was part of the city's overall business, and wasn't-- the business wasn't brought to the council's attention at the request of that council member, then there is no conflict. But there is the optics, there is the politics of, your brother-in-law, your sister-in-law, your friend is asking you to do something. Those relationships unfortunately do exist, and there isn't anything inherently wrong with it. But again, this is the world of politics. If you say-- if you are-- if in your position, someone you know makes a request, that is a legitimate request, again, my advice, and I'm allowed to give, it's not legal advice, it's political advice. My advice is always disclose, and let people know, this is not something that I'm personally benefiting from, this is not something that I want to have happen, this is a request from a community member that I happen to have a relationship with. It doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to vote in their favor, and to keep in mind, because you are all parts of seven-person commissions or boards, it takes four votes. And so you are a single vote. So you do not have to recuse yourselves, and you do not have to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands of people with questions.
All righty.
All right, Paul, if you could stick around just to the end of the presentation, we're almost there, just in case there are any other questions, if people--
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I mentioned the planning docket a little bit earlier. This is the work program, it's basically for the year, primarily for the planning commission, but also for the Landmark Board. We take this to the city council early in the year. We prioritize, we give them an estimate of how much time we think the different items will take, and we ask them to either approve that and give us our marching orders for the year, or to make some changes to that. And they have, in the past, made some changes, probably reprioritized some items. This past year, a lot of our things-- a lot of the items on the docket are things that are mandated, that either the state or the federal government has required us to do, and we have to make sure that we do those by a certain date. So just very quickly, the main items that we have for the planning commission this year, and some of these you've already worked on, some are yet-- yet to come to you. The Canyon Park Suburban Plan Update obviously is one of the big-- big-ticket items that has been ongoing for the last few years, and we're wrapping that up this summer, particularly with the planning commission. We hope to have that work done with your recommendation in July. The next meeting, you're going to have Bruce Blackburn here talking about all the work that's been done since you last saw this back on March 4th. The Downtown Public Space is the one that Dave Boyd has been working on now for the better part of a year, at least, Dave, maybe a little longer, I may have-- might have lost track. And again, we're hoping to wrap that up in July. He's got a presentation for you tonight to kind of bring everybody up to speed, a little bit new on that. But that's been an important work item that Dave has been working with the planning commission on. He's also working on some reduced parking requirements related to affordable housing. This in particular relates to the parcel A, which is along the 522 for the Imagine Housing Project-- Affordable Housing Project that's being proposed there. And that will be coming to you sometime this July, I believe, is when we have that tentatively scheduled to come to you. Critical areas regulations are being updated, Dave is also working on that. And then Dave is also managing-- he's managing the consultants for that, and then we also have consultants working on the Commerce Grant that we received this year, that I think we've talked to the planning commission about, that is increasing the number of lots that can be included in a short plat, going from four lots to nine lots, which is a more standard that a lot of other jurisdictions use, and also to allow duplexes on corner lots and single-family zones. So that's-- those are some of the highlights that are becoming to the planning commission this year. And Sarah, do you want to talk a little about the Landmark Board and some of the items that are going to be coming up for the board?
Sure, just quickly, the Landmark Board, we do have items on the docket every year. The Historic Resource Survey is one, and the Landmark nominations that I've been working on, as well as the Title II-- I'm sorry, Title 22 Amendment. But Landmark Board tends to have more kind of on-demand things, applicants that just last one or two meetings. So coming up in June, we have a certificate of appropriateness for the rehabilitation of a historic landmark that is part of a new development. And we also have a mitigation proposal for the Urban Village 2, which is where the Country Village site was. And then we also have a public complaint-- a public complaint about a sign in the city. So there's a few things coming up in June, but typically, it's just going to be sort of last-minute-type items on the agenda.
Thank you. I'm particularly looking forward to hearing the discussion about the last item there. Okay, with that, I will end the presentation, see if there are any other questions, and then maybe this might be a time to take a break. If there-- if there are any questions, happy to answer those. If, like I said at the beginning of the presentation, if there are any of these topics that you would like us to do a little deeper dive on at a future meeting, we can set some time aside on the agenda, maybe spend 20 or 30 minutes talking more about maybe some of the planning context, or the policies, the vision that's in the Imagine Boffel Comprehensive Plan. And you can let me know about that tonight or some other-- some other time. So any other questions regarding the presentation?
I'm not seeing any hands. Great, those were excellent presentations, I appreciate it. It's-- would-- would there be any appetite out there for taking maybe a three-to-five-minute break to reconvene? Does anybody need a break, to step away and come on back before we get into the next presentation? I see nodding, okay, so let's go ahead. It looks like, according to this clock, it's 6:18. Let's go ahead and-- or sorry, 7:18. Let's reconvene at 7:23. So we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Are there any forecasts when meetings may
Okay, now we're back on the air. And actually, let's, I guess, Commissioner Kieran, do you have a question? Or do you want to hold till later?
Well, just a very quick one. Are there any forecasts when in-person meetings may begin? Is it one of the phases that the governor has announced? Or is it less specific than that?
No, thank you for the question, Commissioner Kieran. The best estimate I can give you at this point is when we get into Phase Three, under the governor's phased approach. That's when you can have up to 50 people. So, in the same room, still with some social distancing. And we think we can accommodate that here in council chambers. And we're still working on reentry as far as reopening City Hall. We think that's probably a few weeks out yet as well. King County is not yet eligible for Phase Two, under the governor's plan. And that's going to take a little while. So, we're looking at something called Phase 1.5. And no one's sure exactly what that is. We're waiting to get some more instruction on that. The governor did extend the Open Public Meetings Act exemption from public attending meetings. So, that's why we originally had planned on opening up the council chambers tonight for anyone who wanted to come in and speak, or just attend the commission meeting. But that order was extended as of last Friday. So, and that goes through June 17th. So, we will not have to do that for the next planning commission meeting either. So, for July, it may be a little bit different setup. We'll see where we are at that point. We're figuring it out as we go along.
Thanks, Michael. So, let's go ahead and move into the next part of the study session. And I guess before we get started, since we're using a kind of a virtual connection here. Normally, on study sessions for the newer people on the commission, as the other commissioners know, we usually just kind of free-form it. It's not like a normal public meeting where I will call on individual commissioners. But tonight, let's go ahead and kind of do it in that type of format where I will call on you. And just go ahead and raise your hand up, and then I'll call your name if you have a question. And then you can ask it to Senior Planner Boyd, or Community Development Director, or myself, or whomever. But just because of the delay, I think it just would help from us talking over each other. So, but it'll be nice to be back together in person eventually, and not have to do it that way. So, with that, let's go ahead and move into the next part of the study session, downtown public space. And we'll be led by Senior Planner Dave Boyd. Take it away, Dave.
Thank you. As Director Cotterman mentioned, this is an item that Planning Commission has been dealing with for the better part of a year. I think we first introduced it in July of 2019. And that's not usual. We don't usually stretch things out that far. But this has proved to be a fairly complex issue. And what I wanted to do tonight was just to, and this will be a repeat for the ongoing commissioners, but I wanted to bring the new commissioners up to speed. And also, since it's been since February that we've actually discussed this topic, that I get the, let this serve as a refresher. So, for the ongoing commissioners, and any of you who tuned in to the Planning Commission meetings on this topic, there'll be a lot of repeat here. And I'm not really expecting much in the way of discussion and direction, but there's certainly an opportunity for that. So, next slide. So, the basis for this, so in downtown Buffalo, there is a requirement in most of the zones, not in the downtown core district, where we want the most dense building fabric. But in most, in all of the other zones, there's a requirement for some public space to be provided with the development, on the development's property. So, it's publicly accessible, but it's still owned by the developer. And the basis for that is in the community vision. And this one phrase from the community vision, "To create a sequence of unfolding spaces that inspire people to walk and linger in the center of the city." So, in the lower left there, the diagram of the public open space network, which also includes some of the major streets, like the multilane boulevard. And on the right of your screen is another concept of how the downtown plan might develop. It's happened a little bit different than what's shown there, but it gives the idea. And you see the green spaces scattered throughout the plan. Some of those are more formally designated, like the half-acre open space is shown here that was required for all of the school district property. It's actually happening up here, closer to the Popkin Field. But also, some private spaces that could be in a courtyard within the development if there was public access, plazas, that sort of thing. So, next. I'm going to go pretty quickly, because we're going to try to get through the, a lot of the ground that's been covered so far. So, as I said, the regulations do require some public space based on, currently based on the number of dwelling units for residential projects, or the commercial area for commercial projects. There are requirements regarding the dimensions allowed. And these all need to be built with the development. But there is a provision for developers to apply for in lieu fees. We don't have to grant that. The director has that authority. And I'll show that it has been utilized to some extent. They have to be publicly accessible, connected to, and/or budding sidewalks. And currently, the requirement is that they be open 24 hours a day. That's one thing that we've discussed. They have to be visible from surrounding streets. There are various requirements and guidelines for elements like walls, fences, and furnishings. And we made an adjustment, a code amendment, kind of early on in the downtown plan development, allowing these public spaces to be bisected by other areas, open areas, like a driveway, if the overall space can be experienced as a whole. The driveway doesn't count towards the required square footage, but we have allowed that. Issues raised so far, and this is just kind of the highlights of those. A lot of people have commented that it's unclear that some of these spaces are, in fact, open to the public, that they're not inviting. Developers have weighed in, saying that the amount is too high, particularly for apartment projects. And the feeling is that perhaps too many of them are relying on the in-lu fees. So, next. And there are different kinds of open spaces. The previous slide showed an illustration from the plan of a passage. And the picture in the middle here, well, actually, all of these pictures are in the townhome developments in the west part of downtown, Dawson Square and the Landing. They use these passages as their way of providing public open space. And they also provide connections to surrounding uses and through the project. So, we've looked at a bunch of examples that have been built to date, and some that are just at the proposal stage. Next. That last one was in the downtown transition district. These are two projects that were done by the same development. The 104, over on 104th and 185th, and Six Oaks on Buffalo Way, between 183rd and 185th, and 98th. Since these were both being done by the same developer, the developer was having difficulty meeting the requirement on the 104 site, where they provided courtyards along the north side and at the entry as part of their public open space. So, they asked if they could transfer some of their requirement to the Six Oaks project, which was mostly in the downtown core, and had a, so it had a very small open space requirement. And we allowed them to do that. That was an interpretation of the code that allowed them to do that. And next slide shows what they did with that. Of course, the Six Oaks that they preserved on the southeast corner were part of that. Even though it's not accessible, we thought that was a definite public benefit. On the west side, there is an area that has a small dog park and a rain garden. Again, the rain garden isn't really accessible to the public, except visually, but it, we felt it was a, did provide a public benefit to the, those passing by on the sidewalk. And the original plan proposed, the original proposal was to allow developers who built new sidewalks to also count that as part of their public space. Because the idea was that those sidewalks were part of that open space network. The Planning Commission and council at that time did not go along with that idea. There was some discussion, we've had some discussion about that, but that hasn't moved forward. The other, the last piece of their public open space in the lower right is a courtyard near their rear entry, and just outside their exercise room, as part of their public open space. Next. Here's the addition apartments. They provided the amount of public space that they thought they could provide on their site plan along the north side. It's a space that also acts as an accessible entry to the second level of their lobby. And along 185th, there are stairways, there is a stairway into that space. And we asked them to provide a historic plaque showing the buildings that used to sit on that site as a way to help draw people into that space. Next. Similarly, the Mercantile provided their public open space on the, on the north side of the building. And also, we, it's not shown in the picture, but in the little inset there is a plaque that they have now installed showing the building that is now the, actually, that's Buffalo's first schoolhouse, which was moved to the Park at Buffalo Landing. So, that picture in the caption explains that. And then, there is, there's three levels of open space, all connected to the sidewalk at different levels, including a small green area that's on the other side of the driveway. And that's where the amendment to allow that as public open space came in. Next. We've also looked at what other jurisdictions do. And typically, when we bring you code amendments, we do try to show what other jurisdictions in the area require. I'm not expecting you to look at these, and this is just to show you part of what has been discussed here. And next, these are charts showing requirements for multifamily, both multifamily areas and urban centers, that were done by Makers, a consultant who was working on this, these kind of issues for a couple of other cities. And what this analysis showed was that Buffalo, downtown Buffalo's requirements were higher than other jurisdictions in the area. It's a little bit hard to compare, because every jurisdiction calculates them in a different way, it seems. And there are different things that they allow to meet that requirement. But generally speaking, we can say that Buffalo has a higher requirement than surrounding jurisdictions. Next. So, issues that we've addressed to date. For last year, we actually passed some amendments to change the terminology, to distinguish these public spaces from the required parks and public open space impact fee. We've changed, we no longer call them public open spaces, although I often slip. We, the umbrella term is outdoor space, which includes designated public space, which is the main focus here, and also private outdoor space. So, developments are required to provide both of those, in most cases. In this process, we've addressed signage. And there's an image of an open space sign, a public space sign from the city of Seattle that includes hours of operation. And we concluded in that, we revised the original discussion that we had to allow there to be a template that developers could use, but also to encourage them to incorporate this kind of signage in the sort of interpretive sign that we've seen in a couple of other projects. We've talked about amenities and connections to the sidewalk, and beefing up those requirements and guidelines. A requirement for a permanent easement on these public spaces, which we didn't have, we don't have currently. We've discussed an exemption, and there's commission consensus for exempting the smallest sites that would produce public spaces that are really no, not usable. And to limit in-lu fee options to medium-sized sites, larger than the ones that are exempt, that would require less than 1,000 square feet, up to those that would require less than 3,000 square feet. Those can, those medium sites can, can go full fee in lieu without any restrictions. We've discussed limitations for larger sites on the use of in-lu fees, which I'll touch on a little bit more. Still under consideration is what the requirement is, and how we calculate the requirement. Like I said, the current requirement is based on, for residential, is based on per unit. And we've just, we've looked at, analyzed a reduction in that amount of about 60 to 67% of the current amount that we require. But relatively late in the process, we began to look at a requirement just based on floor, for both residential and commercial space. And I'll touch on that a little bit more shortly. Other things that are still, I guess we're still open to any other ideas, but we've been discussing allowing transfers, allowing a certain percentage of required public space to be provided as in-lu fee for all projects. And those are the main topics still under consideration. And I just realized that we were going to stop for questions at a couple of points, and those prompts didn't make it into this version. But I think this might be a good point to stop, and see if there are any questions on what I've covered to date.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi. I have a request for information about previous discussions of public space, especially in light of current events, COVID, and protests. What would be an appropriate time, if any, to raise those questions?
Well, you can certainly email me anytime with your questions, if you have specific ones, or email or call me. And I'd be happy to discuss those. And of course, we haven't really discussed this since the pandemic has hit us, so that hasn't been discussed to date.
Did you have additional comment on that, Sarah?
Yes. I made a question, and I'm happy with the yes or no answer here. Is there any difference between the activities that can take place in a municipal public space and a privately-owned public space, for example, protests?
That is an excellent question. I think, I'm not going to try to answer that on the spot. I'm going to give that some thought, and consult with others at the city. Certainly, these privately-owned, they're also responsible for maintaining them. So, my expectation has been that there will be somewhat higher level of control on the private spaces. There won't be a right-of-public assembly necessary, but I'd like to discuss that and get back to you on that.
Great. Thank you. And one more question, if possible. Chair, if that's all right with you.
Yes.
Yeah. In other cities, sorry? In other cities, there have been issues in quasi-public spaces, where owners or employees have called the police on people of color for noncriminal activity. I think I'm thinking of the Philadelphia Starbucks. Has the commission or city ever touched upon these risks of racial profiling or treatment?
Again, that, that is an issue that hasn't come to date. And I will, we will discuss that, and be prepared to talk about it more at the public hearing.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission for the presentation so far? Commissioner Kieran.
Takes a minute to unmute. I'm not certain if this is on point for this particular agenda item, or more general. But I know that the city, last night, I believe, looked at Bill 20-070 regarding allowing businesses to expand into Main Street, for instance, and also into parking. Does that commit to play with the public space? And are there planning issues associated with that?
I'd say no, because that is discussion surrounding surrounding use of public right-of-way, not private property. So, that's the division there. Like I said, there had been some discussion of allowing a developer to count their sidewalk space, at least. But we haven't gone with that approach.
I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe there was a section of that bill that allowed use of private parking for expanding businesses.
And I can, I think I can address that.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Kieran, you're referring to the discussion at the council meeting last night?
Yes.
Okay. That, that part of the discussion is about an ordinance that is coming to them next week, on June 9th. So, it's two separate, but certainly related issues in terms of what they're trying to accomplish. One has to do with the use of public right-of-way, whether that's sidewalk or street roadway. And the other has to do with the use of private property, particularly parking areas that are on private property for outdoor dining, to allow an expansion of the use of the restaurant into an area so they can increase the capacity, since they're going to be limited in the next phase of the reentry. So, that will come to the council next week in terms of an ordinance for their consideration. And I want to just clarify a couple of things. And I think this gets to some of what Commissioner Gustafson was asking about as well. It's important to keep in mind, and we'll do some more research on this, as Dave said, what the responsibilities and what the authority is of the city in terms of regulating these spaces. Because for the most part, they are still private property. We are simply requiring that they allow public use of that private property during certain periods of time. And this, currently, we require 24/7, but I think the direction from the commission was to make some limitations on that. So, as far as how those might be used for social gathering, for example, I'm not sure that the city would regulate that. Or in terms of how, you know, what might happen for racial profiling on the site. You know, that's really an issue that's somewhat separate, because that could occur in a lot of different places. That could occur in a business, as the example you cited. So, what will, to me, though, it gets back to the ownership of the property and what rights the city actually has for the public use of those, of that private property. So, we'll approach the questions from that standpoint, and provide that information to you. Because it will inform, I think, the discussion of how we want, how we want to set those up in terms of access, and visibility, and signage, and those kinds of things. And did I, ultimately, in that, did I answer your question, Commissioner Kieran?
Mute. Yeah, I believe so. Just real briefly, so are there land use issues associated with that? Or is that separate from this?
I think it's really separate from this. Because what we're talking about, as far as the parking areas in particular for the council next week, is going to be something that'd be for a limited amount of time. We're really looking at that as sort of a temporary way to help restaurants provide additional capacity. So, I think it's going to be a separate issue from what we're talking about. This is really a long-term situation we're talking about with the additional public spaces.
Okay. And for the right-of-way, particularly Main Street, that is a public space, and it's publicly owned right-of-way. So, that's separate from this issue?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you.
And as far as the use of the parking lots, the land use issue there is that we require a certain amount of parking for different uses. And so, we're essentially waiving that requirement for a temporary time to allow this other use to happen there.
I, I think it's a good idea, given the condition, current conditions, so I support that. Even separate from here.
Okay. So we go on, move on?
Commissioner Olson.
Hi. I just kinda wanna echo what Sarah said and, and say that I am, I'm very interested in learning more about sort of not only what the public can do in these spaces, but what level of control, you know, the, the private owners have over the activity in those spaces? Like at what point they're allowed to say, no, don't do that here? And I, I really think that will help shape, you know, the changes. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, and thank you for giving that information.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, Dave, looks like I don't see any other questions, so if I don't know if you want to continue on with your presentation?
I would. Next. Oh, there is my prompt. So, so we've also looked at examples of proposed projects, and this one, the Ross Road Apartments in the downtown transition district, which is on the north side of 185th, between 104th and Ross Road, has kinda been the, we, we've used this one quite a bit, because it came to us, the developer was having a, having difficulty meeting the requirement, and we've been back and forth with the developer and with the planning commission on different, kind of testing out different ideas here. So next, I think the, their proposed area, which has changed a bit, was about 8,000 square feet, which was quite a bit less than, than the requirement. The same developer, and in their, they requested the, to transfer some of their required open space to this office development that they're doing on 98th Avenue and 185th. And so we, we did administrate, administratively allow that between the 104 and Six Oaks, but I raised the question of, you know, should that be allowed? Should we explicitly allow that in the code? And then the question of whether there should be a, it needed to be within a certain radius of, of the, the project. So next shows an analysis of that. The, the proposal was 0.4 miles. We allowed it previously at about 0.31 miles. And I proposed at the February meeting that perhaps a half mile radius would be, would be appropriate. And there was some discussion, I, I don't, didn't feel like we came to a consensus on that, so that'll be an open question for the, the continued hearing on July 1st. Another issue is whether we should allow transfers between adjacent sites. Again, the same developer that's doing the office building on 98th is, is close to completion if they haven't completed, while I've been away from the office, an apartment building just to the south of it. And so that's one thing that I think there was consensus on allowing that, those kinds of transfers to adjacent sites. But, and I think there was also strong support for that developer is creating, is developing a walkway that extends the pedestrian connection from 98th to 96th on, through an easement on an adjacent property. So it doesn't meet the locational or the, and dimensional requirements in the code right now, but there did seem to be support for giving credit for those kinds of improvements. So that'll be coming back. And since we, I don't think we need to stop right now, so let's go on to the next. I think we can go through the rest of these. I have added one additional project, proposal on 191st. This is kind of behind the, the Rite Aid development that began as a townhome proposal, but then they, because of some site issues, they changed and are now proposing apartments. And this is their, their sort of conceptual site plan. This is, and they're showing all of the area and crosshatches their public open space. But we know already that it doesn't all really qualify. It includes some areas that aren't really publicly accessible. It includes a large area that's essentially a fire lane that we could allow, and other parts of it don't meet the dimensional requirement, so. But I did wanna add this. This is in a, in the general downtown corridor zone. We didn't have any examples from that district previously, so, so that's added to the comparison table, which I believe is next. And I don't wanna go into this in, in a great amount of detail, but this is the, the table that adjusts the, the current per unit requirement, keeps, sticks with a per unit requirement, but adjusts the, this is the part where we, we discussed making the requirement about 60% of what it is now, going from 150 square feet to 90 square feet in, in the downtown transition and corridor districts, and from 100 square feet to 60 square feet in the downtown neighborhood district. If you just click, there, there's some highlighting that comes up that I wanted to show you. So without going to the next slide, just click. So you see here that the, this reduction would actually reduce the amount required in townhome projects, which have been able to meet the requirement fairly handily. And, but, and then for apartment projects, as you click one more time, the addition of apartments, it, it gets it closer to the amount that they provided, but it still would be quite a bit less than the current requirements in that central shaded column. And one more click, I believe, the Ross Road Apartments, that the proposal there, again, it gets it, this, this reduction gets close to what they are saying that they can reasonably do on the site, but it's still, it's quite a bit less than the, the current requirement. So that's one level of analysis. And at the February 5th meeting, on the next chart, we started looking at options based on a, on floor area. And this actually seemed to be a better approach because it addresses, it, it works for both town, townhomes and, and apartment buildings, works better for, for both of them. So again, if you click, we've got the, I think the townhome projects. We first looked at a, a 10% requirement in downtown transition in the corridor districts, and 6%, the same as, the same percentages for commercial space in, in these, these districts in the downtown neighborhood, it's 6%. That got us close to the amount that, that actually was an increase, slight increase in the amount that would, has been provided and is required for townhomes. And then one more click, and gets close, very close to the amount, especially with the, if we allow 10% in lieu fee for what has been, what developers have been able to provide in apartment projects. And one more click for the proposed Ross Road Apartments, again, quite close to, to what they, they have shown is, is feasible, they feel is feasible there. What's new here is in February, we looked at a 10% and a 20% total. Now we've introduced somewhat, the 20% was, was a little bit too high. These numbers are a 15% in the transition in corridor districts, and 10% in the downtown neighborhood district, and then 9% for townhomes in the transition in corridor districts, and 6% for townhomes and offices in the, in the downtown neighborhood. And we, we feel this is getting, getting to a, the balance that, that does seem to work for most projects, gets close to what, what seems to be working on the ground. So next. So now, any further questions and comments? And, and any, I'm not gonna go through these bullet points and ask you to confirm or, or provide preferences right now. We'll, we'll cover that at the public hearing on July 1st. Are there any, any questions or comments?
Jenny?
Thank you. I believe the complex that I'm, I'm, I'm asking about is Forest Ridge on 191st.
Right.
Was that proposed open space behind the building or up against the street?
It connects to the street on the, at 191st, and it extends along the east side of the project, which essentially is the, the backside. The main, the main pedestrian entrance is on the, the east side, where the driveway is, yes. Oh, on the bottom side there, I guess, is where the, the walkway connects to the main entrance by the, the car entrance. And so, but the building is a double-sided apartment building, there's a corridor down the middle and apartments on both sides, so, so there will be apartments facing that open, the, what they're proposing for open space on the, on the west side of the building.
So the, the, I'm sorry, I wanna understand this. So the open space is on the west side of the building?
Yes.
Or is it on the north side?
On the west side. In this image, the north is to the right.
Okay.
We generally try to put north up, but occasionally, just because of the size, they put to the right.
Okay. So, so what it looks like then is that there is a fair amount of, of public space that would be seen from the street and that would be able to invite people in. It, I'm glad to know that it had been rotated, because if I'm looking at, you know, the top of it as the north, then that's behind the building, and wondering how that then becomes accessible to the public. So it's on the side, it's on the west side. Thank you.
And that's where the, the requirement that'd be, not only be connected to the street, it'd be visible from the street. The issues here are that, that areas that are right up against the building are, are raised planters. They're probably more appropriately private open space that, that would be open, usable by the, the tenants that are on those levels. And then the, the very western edge, there, there's a retaining wall, and that skinny piece sliver that reaches over to the street on the, on the left. I just, we, we don't think that's really accessible or usable public space, so. And they'd have to really show us how the, that fire access driveway could be developed in a way that would, would really function as public open space as well. So this is a long way from being, being something that we would approve.
Right. Well, and, and I guess, so I was getting at that, at the question of do these public spaces need to be visible from the street? And, and yes, they do. So thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that.
Thank you. That's very good points. Commissioner Kurt.
Thanks. Thanks for the presentation, Dave. I'm wondering if you could maybe touch on some of the other forms of open space that have been approved by the city, such as the, which was approved for the POP development? It is kind of a different form in that it's a plaza on the second story, and I just wanted to see if you could maybe talk about that for our new commission members, just to bring them up to speed.
Yeah. Did have that slide available if it came up, but didn't include it. I'll bring it for the July 1st. But the developer for the POP had some challenges meeting the requirement. The required open space was almost a third of their site, and they argued that they also had to contribute as one of the north, former North Shore School District sites to the, what's now called the Horse Creek Plaza, right adjacent. So they made an argument to meet their open space requirement in a couple of unconventional ways. They have a, a second level terrace with three townhomes that are only accessible via that terrace, and they proposed making that, that terrace part of their public open space. It is the way that somebody going to those, any of those apartments would have to pass through that space, and they proposed to have both a stairway from the sidewalk and ADA accessible connection through the lobby and up to the plaza via the elevator. And, and then we kind of negotiated with them to give that a try, but we required them to actually program some events early on during, during the first period of, of that building being open to invite the public up, so that people got used to it being a public space and, and understood that. And we have signage, we're still working out some issues in terms of the, the signage and the, and the connection. And they pushed the issue about the, the open hours and proposed that it only be open in the hours that we, that our public parks are, and, and that's what is in the draft legislation for consideration that, that we've discussed already. The other piece that was a little, is unconventional, is they proposed allowing pedestrians to share their, the drive aisle accessing their parking garage, and doing that with some treatments to that connection that would let drivers know that it was shared space, and also that that connection didn't just have a dead end, that it connected around the backside of the building to the Horse Creek Plaza property, so that could be used by people walking their dog around the building, people just going to the, finding an, an alternate route to the plaza. And that required them to get an easement, an agreement with the North Shore School District to use part of their property as, as part of those improvements. And with those, they actually provided more square footage than they were required, but we, we kind of discounted that. And, and so that's somewhat an experiment that we're trying out to see if those are successful. And of course, shortly after they began occupancy, the, the pandemic hit, so we haven't really, they haven't had a chance to hold any events in that space, and it may be a while before they can. So, so that's also another issue that the commission is grappled with.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gustafson.
The net floor area calculation, would this treat a 50 square feet, 50,000 square foot project on one level the same as a 50,000 square foot project with five levels that only occupies 10,000 square feet on the ground?
It would. I think for practical purposes in the, in the downtown subarea, well, there are some, some minimum height requirements. And we're just not seeing much in the way of developments that, that don't take advantage of at least some of that height capacity, if not full, fully take advantage of the height. But yeah, there's no provision. It's not a floor area ratio requirement that's intended to encourage or to allow developers to go higher if they leave more of the, the area unbuilt.
Commissioner Kiernan?
So, two comments. One regarding the passages, and I think we've talked about this before, but particularly looking at the Dawson Square Passages, I think it's very important that they be signed as providing public access, you know, to the library or whatever. Those long, somewhat narrow passageways can seem a little intimidating, and the signs, as much as anything, might remind the residents that others can go on those passageways. So, I think that signage is very important. The other thing I think is important for us all to keep in mind is, as we look at this, we're balancing some interests, and open space is great, it's a wonderful thing, but we're also encouraging density in downtown, and we don't want our space requirements to inhibit the ability for developers to economically develop these things. So, it is definitely a balancing act. Just those two comments. Thank you.
Good points.
Thank you.
Can I just, oh yes, Commissioner Olson?
Sorry, I thought of this after Commissioner Kiernan's comment. In the interest of encouraging density, has it ever been on the table to offer maybe like another floor or something, you know, in exchange for open space on the ground?
I would say there has been some discussion of providing bonuses for various public benefits, or even trading off in-lu fees for affordable housing, and all, those sorts of programs are, get very, very complex very quickly. So, this one is already pretty complex, as attested to the fact that Planning Commission has been grappling with this for almost a year now, and several meetings. So, we've chosen to steer away from those kinds of trade-offs and bonuses.
Maybe that's something that can be done in the next comprehensive plan or something, per se, if they wanted to address it then. Might make it a little bit easier. It's pretty entailed. Commissioner Kiernan?
Yeah, I would like to state for the new members, kind of echoing off of what Dave said, the commission did have some significant discussions about credits for affordable housing downtown, so there are some credits there, and we did a lot of work around that.
And...
Any other questions?
Well, just more of a question, I guess, yeah, and I think it's something for me that I, that is, because it's really about the quality. I think maybe it got to maybe what Commissioner Kiernan was saying, and also alludes to what Commissioner Aldrich was saying, and it's the quality of the open space too, maybe just not the square footage, and how accessible is, for instance, like, for the newer commissioners, there was a Ross Road, we don't need to go to the slide, but there was a Ross Road Apartments that we've been kind of talking about for a while, and it just happens to be down the hill from my house. And, so I'm really familiar with that area, and I've always been a little bit hesitant about the quality of it because of the amount of the space that's on the north side of a tall building in the northwest. Not only, it's kind of hard to see unless you're coming down 104th and you happen to see it, but it's going to be shaded most of the year, and I just don't know how usable that is for the public. So, but this has been a really good discussion. Thanks for the questions. And so, Dave, I guess this is more of just kind of a question session. Is there some, as people are kind of thinking about additional questions they might have before we close the study session, would you, have we kind of given you guidance? Is there still some kind of big holes that we haven't had questions with regards on that might help you before the next meeting?
I hope not. I think we've got good direction, we've seen good direction all along the way from the commission. I would encourage, a little homework assignment here, I would encourage the new members particularly to go back and take a look at the previous meetings packets and/or review the videos from the previous meetings. I think that will help get everybody up to speed and on to the same page as much as possible. And, and then, we're hoping, we were hoping when we finished on February 5th, that the next meeting in March would be the final meeting where the commission would make its recommendation. So, we're hoping that that'll be the case for the July 1st continued public hearing.
Great. Does anybody have any, oh, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yes, I have a slightly code-related question regarding the in-lu fee proposals discussed. I liked the proposal in which you would allow even larger projects to do a 10% waiver if they paid an in-lu fee. But, I do have a question about the dividing line between the smaller and larger projects. It seems that, at least according to the current proposal, a large project would use the 10% rule, so they could get 10% of their public space requirement waived. So, for a project with, say, 3,500 square feet of requirement, they would be able to get 350 square feet waived if they use the in-lu fee option. But, on the other hand, you have projects between 1,000 and 3,000 square feet, which could use an in-lu fee for the entire amount. So, if I'm missing something perhaps, but it seems to me that a 3,500-square-foot requirement, they could only waive 350 square feet, but a 3,000-square-foot requirement would be able to waive the whole amount, which seems a little strange to have different outcomes for similar projects, and perhaps we could do a phased plan if we choose to go ahead with that route, maybe saying everyone could get 1,000 square feet waived using the in-lu fee, and after that, the 10% would add on top of that, if that makes any sense.
I think that's a good point, and that actually was one of the issues that we had identified for some further discussion, is whether that formula was right, and whether perhaps the 10% could be higher. So, we will be taking a closer look at that and anticipate bringing back some options for your consideration on July 1st.
Thank you.
So, anyone else who has any other questions for Dave? Okay, well, thank you, Dave. Oh, actually, one, looks like we have another question. Commissioner Aldrich? No problem. This is great.
Yeah, speaking in. At what point, and I realize that, I'm just trying to get up to speed here, but at what point will there be the opportunity to discuss how these public spaces are used and what kinds of events the different developments are planning to welcome the public in? And that might not be at this time, so, and just, or how would I find that information? Where would you point me?
Other than the, that upper-level terrace, we haven't really talked about any requirements for programming of these spaces. The different spaces, you know, based on how they're designed and placed on the site, the use is somewhat dictated by that. Like I said, the Six Oaks that were preserved, and Six Oaks isn't really accessible space, there aren't pathways through it, but it's along a sidewalk. It, we felt that it provided a significant public benefit just in preserving those trees in a area that could be enjoyed by the public. The Dog Park is more one, obviously, is designed for a specific use, and we've had other proposals for similar type amenities in other projects. So, it really is, it goes with how they're designed, and, and we've, the amendments that we've discussed do add more, a little more in terms of guidance for those, in the guidelines, and to certain extent in the requirements as well. So, we can go into that in more detail on July 1st.
Commissioner Gustafson?
I have a few more questions about the in-lu fees, just to help me and perhaps others understand how much of a big deal they are. Perhaps for July 1st, what would be a typical in-lu fee payment for a requirement of 1,000 square feet? How does the city publish these costs? And how much of an impact on the city's budget are they? What are the fees used for? Just some general information to help us realize, is this a big issue or is this a minor issue in the grand scheme of things?
And, yeah, we can come back with some information on that, but the amount of the in-lu fee is not part of the code. That's a fee that is established separately, and it's an issue that we're grappling with, and I'm not sure if we'll have a definitive answer by July 1st, but we'll try to give you as good of an idea on that as we can.
And Commissioner Kiernan? Did you have a comment on that?
Yes, I tried to restrain myself, but I've made this comment on the fee in lieu almost every time. One of the impacts we need to keep in mind in fee in lieu is that it transfers the long-term operating costs from the developer who would otherwise have a property where they're picking up litter and maintaining vegetation, to the city, who now has this fee and is managing the property. So, it's just a comment, but it's something I think we need to keep in mind as we look at how to set those fees.
We'll plan on having a little more discussion about the fees at the July 1st meeting.
And one thing I'll say is also, we're having an internal discussion, again, this won't be part of the code, but we are having an internal discussion. We understand the commission's interest in how those would be used. They wouldn't necessarily be used to create more public space that the city would then be responsible for maintaining. They could be used for providing amenities to that, to improve the overall public space network, perhaps through public art or other, there are a lot of ideas that have been, that have been proposed for how we might use those fees, and we'll include that, more of that in the July presentation.
Okay, is there any other questions for Dave before we wrap this up for tonight? This part of the... Okay, Dave, well, thank you very much for the great presentation and answering all those questions. Excellent job, commission and new commissioners on kind of delving into this. You guys are like old pros. Let's see. So, with that, we'll go ahead and bring that study section to a close. So, we have something fun to do now. We are going to do elections, and tonight, we will be, it's unfortunate we're not here in person together to do this, makes it a little bit different, but we're going to have, we're going to have nominations from the floor here for both chair, and we'll do that first, and the vice chair. And so, how this works is, one of the other fellow commissioners will nominate somebody from the floor, and then, that person will either accept or decline that nomination, and then, we'll also open it up to see if there are additional people who would like to nominate somebody else for that same position. And, and then, we'll go ahead and, I guess, community development director Cotterman will actually go through and take a roll call for people's votes on those commissioners for the elected positions. So, but also, I do, I would like to, and try to keep it a little bit short, but I'd love for people to be able, who are nominated, to be able to speak on behalf of why they think they would do a good job of that particular position, should they choose, not a requirement, but if you want to, maybe, you know, spend a minute or two and tell us about why you think you'd be good for that particular elected position. So, with that, I will go ahead and entertain nominations from the floor for chair of the Bottle Planning Commission.
I would just also add, Mr. Chair, that someone can nominate themselves as well.
Okay. And you can self-nominate. It looks like we have Commissioner Kurt?
Thanks. I nominate Commissioner Kiernan for the position of chair. Briefly, his judgment has been really well-received by the commission over the past year that I've been present. He brings a wide background of different informations and work in public service and government. He deals really well with his fellow commissioners. Also, he has good attendance, and he's present, which is another important thing.
Thank you. And, so, yes, Commissioner Piestrip?
I'll be quick and just reiterate what Carson said. You know, having Commissioner Kiernan's experience with the county work and having his vast knowledge, I've learned a lot from him the past year. I think he would be a tremendous choice for chairing this committee.
Thank you. Okay, great. I'll see. With that, are there any other nominee, oh, Commissioner Kiernan, do you would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the kind words from the, my fellow commissioners. I would look forward to serving as chair if elected. I am a licensed professional engineer. I've got 30 years' experience in government process. I've always enjoyed public process, and have been on the other side of some commissions, managed them. So, I look forward to being able to continue to work with this one. So, thanks.
Okay, great. Are there any other nominations from the floor at this time? Commissioner Piestrip?
Are we nominating for chair for him, or the vice chair as well, or no?
Let's just do chair at this point in time, if that's okay. Does that seem reasonable, Michael? Yeah, just to do one at a time? Okay. So, let's just do chair. Thank you. That's a very good question. Okay, so, I'm not seeing any other nominations from the floor, so with that, do we need a motion to close nominations for chair? What if Roberts?
Yes, I think we probably should.
Can I have a motion to, looks like we have a motion on the, Commissioner Olson, to close the nominating?
I motion to close nominations for chair.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Piestrip? Okay. All those, and is there any discussion?
Okay. I'll need a call roll for that.
Okay.
Okay, this is, this is a vote to close the nominations. So, Commissioner Aldrich, aye or nay?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kurt?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Piestrip?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. All ayes, Mr. Chairman. The motion to close nominations for chair passes.
Great.
So, now, we vote on nomination.
Now, I...
Commissioner Kiernan to be chair.
Right. So, we need a motion to...
Actually, I think we have the motion.
Oh, great. Okay, to close it. Okay, so, with that, we will... Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and take a roll call then?
Yes.
For Commissioner Kiernan, for Chair of the Bothell Planning Commission.
Yes, so an aye vote will be to elect Commissioner Kiernan as the next Chair of the Commission, and nay vote would be to not elect him as Chair.
And we need four affirmative votes.
We need a majority, yes. So Commissioner Alderks?
Looking for an aye or nay?
An aye, correct. An aye or nay. And I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. It was an aye from Commissioner Alderks. Commissioner Kurt?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Piestrip?
Aye.
Thank you. And Chair Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Kiernan.
Congratulations, Kevin. So...
Thank you all.
Yes, would you like to say anything else? Okay, yeah. So, Michael, so I'll just go ahead and continue to kind of share it for the rest of the meeting. How should we do this?
Normally, we would hand over the gavel at this point, but I think due to the fact that we're working virtually, I would suggest that we have Commissioner Kiernan assume those duties for our next meeting on June 17th.
Great, he's okay with that. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. New Chair. Let's see. Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and accept nominations from the floor for the Chair Protem or Vice Chair. Commissioner Olson.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Kurt for Vice Chair. I have respected Commissioner Kurt's input and questions on a lot of issues watching the Planning Commission in the last year, and I think that he would be a very fair representative.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Kurt, just on, do you accept that nomination? Okay, let's see, he gave a thumbs up, so Commissioner Kurt did accept that nomination. Are, let's see, are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay, seeing none.
Could we at least have a second for that nomination, just so for...
Oh, yes. I saw Commissioner Piestrip's hand went up the quickest.
Yeah, I'm happy to be too. I'd love to second that nomination.
Commissioner Kurt, would you like to speak a little bit about yourself at all with regards to, or any comments about?
Sure. Okay, yeah. So the position of Chair is really a kind of backup and I'd be happy to support the Commission here when the new Chair, Kiernan, is not present. I also have gone to a lot of external events, planning-related events around for the Commission, and I think that that'll hopefully be able to inspire more people to get involved in their own capacities and I'm excited. Thank you for the nominations.
Great.
I should also mention the Vice Chair is in charge of all social activities for the Planning Commission.
That's right. That's right. Hopefully he's up for that. Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yeah, we can be a motion to close nominations. We have Commissioner Kiernan first, seconded by Commissioner Olson by raising of hands.
Yes, I would, yes, I move we close nominations for Vice Chair.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Olson. Okay, and with that...
I'll do the roll.
Okay.
Commissioner Ald, I'm sorry, this is aye if you want to close, nay if you do not want to close. So Commissioner Alderks?
Thank you.
Commissioner Kurt?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Piestrip?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Nominations are closed.
Okay.
So I can, can we do the roll call on the...
Yes, we will do a roll call now for confirmation of Commissioner Kurt to Vice Protem.
So aye is to elect Commissioner Kurt as Vice Chair, and nay would be to not elect him as Vice Chair. So Commissioner Alderks? Thank you. Commissioner Kurt?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiernan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Piestrip?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. Again, unanimous, Mr. Chair. Congratulations. Commissioner Kurt?
Well, that's great. Well, congratulations to the new Chair, Kiernan, and Vice Chair, Chair Protem, Kurt, and the Commission is going to be in great hands going forward. It's so weird to not be in person. That's kind of a big deal. So anyway, congratulations to you all and thanks for all your comments and the nominations from the floor. Do we have any old business? Okay. And then staff reports?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chair.
Sure, you have some. We haven't met in like two and a half months.
I think we've covered some of the big things about when we're going to start meeting in person again. We will certainly keep you posted on that. I just wanted to thank all of the commissioners for doing the test of the WebEx to make sure that we could pull tonight's meeting off. I have to say, very few glitches. I'm pleasantly shocked that we actually made it through with only one glitch and that was my mistake. So thank you all very much for doing that and thank you for being here this evening and working through this virtually. I know it's not the best way to do a meeting, believe me. I know that and I'm sure many of you go through the same thing with virtual meetings for the better part of your workdays. So appreciate your patience and your perseverance as we work through all of this. The next meeting is going to be June 17th. That is the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission. We'll go through the same procedure. I'll send you a meeting invitation. It will have the join meeting button in there for you. And again, we would ask that you join the meeting five or 10 minutes early just to make sure everybody's online and everything's working. If, particularly for the newer commissioners, I know to get up to speed on some of the things we're going to be talking about, if there is information, as Mr. Boyd mentioned earlier, please go back and watch the videos of previous Planning Commission meetings. I think that could be very helpful on those particular topics. Also, the old agenda packets are available on the website. If you have questions about any of that information or if there's something that's missing that you can't find, please feel free to contact me or the staff person that's working on that project. We're very happy to talk to you. We want to make sure that we're providing you with all the information and the resources that you need in order to make a well-informed recommendation to the City Council. So I would encourage you, certainly the new commissioners, but all of the commissioners for that because we have had two months here where we've kind of been on hiatus and we're all trying to get back up to speed a little bit for that. The next meeting on the 17th is going to be focused almost exclusively, possibly exclusively, on Canyon Park. We are under a tight timeline with the state. Our funding from the state runs out at the end of June and we're already in June. How that happened, I don't know, but we're already in June for this year. So Mr. Blackburn and the consultant team are working frantically to get as much done as possible before the end of this month, which means there will be a lot of information coming to you at the June meeting. We're not asking you to make a decision at that point. We've been working off the preferred alternative that the Commission approved back on March 4th. So there'll be a draft sub-area plan, there'll be at least some type of an outline, hopefully an annotated outline of what the regulations would be that would go with that. We are getting ready to issue the final EIS as well that will go with the draft EIS that was published back in December. So all of that old information is available on the project website for Canyon Park and we'll be posting the new information as that becomes available as well. Commissioner Kiernan?
Two related questions. Will that be Bruce's last meeting? I know his retirement is near and there was also talk about hiring staff to overlap with him before he retired and I know with the closure, that would have been a challenging thing, but has that hire been made as well?
The hire has not been made. We started the process, we got most of the way through the process and then the pandemic hit and that pretty much changed the game for everything. So there's a freeze right now on hiring and we have not filled that position and we will not be filling that position for the rest of this year. Whether that will be in the 21, 22 budget is part of the discussion that the Council will have when we start those discussions with the City Council. In fact, one of the announcements I was going to make this evening is that we have three budget workshops coming up with the Council later in June. I think it's the 20, what day would that be? 23rd, 24th, and 25th of June, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week. So each of those evenings, we're hoping to do those live and in person, but we may have to do them virtually as well. But that's when we'll begin the discussion with the City Council about the budget for the next biennium and what that looks like. And frankly, at this point, we know we still have a budget issue. We have a $5.4 million gap for this year and I guess we haven't had that discussion with the Planning Commission. This came about after our last meeting. So if you haven't heard, we have a $5.4 million gap just for 2020. That's our estimate based on the sales tax, property tax, permit fees, and other revenues that we expect we will not be seeing this year. We already had a gap of a little less than a million dollars that we knew we would have to fill. That's a lot easier to fill than a $5.4 million gap. So we had to take some action and some drastic action and fairly quickly, necessary but severe action. And so the city has laid off 15 positions that were effective June 1st. There are some of those that will not be filled, such as Mr. Blackburn's position when he retires in July. As I said, that will not be filled, at least for the rest of this year, and we'll have a discussion about 21, 22. We also are currently on furlough, so all of the, basically, all but police and fire, which illegally cannot be furloughed, the rest of the city staff is on a 10% furlough. So starting this month, every other Friday, city offices will be closed. I mean, they are physically closed now, but we won't have anyone working on those Fridays. So that started this month, the first day for that will be Friday, June 12th. So, and for the executive leadership team and some of the non-represented employees that started back in May 1st. So we have a reduction in resources that are available for the work that we need to do as well and we have to factor that into the work that we're doing. To answer your question about Mr. Blackburn's last day, that is going to be sometime in July. I keep trying to get him to pin that down for me. So I would expect at this point, he will be here for the July 1st meeting. Beyond that, I don't know, but I will certainly let you know ahead of time what his last meeting will be. So, and have I answered all of your questions, Commissioner Kiernan? You're muted. Let me unmute you. Could you say that again, please?
Sorry, yes, we will have to give Bruce virtual congratulations and thank you for his service then, I guess.
We may have to do that, yes, unfortunately.
Looks like Commissioner Gustafson.
I would just like to thank the city staff for being so dedicated during this time. I know that even if you're at 90% of the time, you're still doing 100% of the work, so, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I have to say, in my, a little personal aside if I could...
Yes, please, please.
In my now decades of experience working in many different jurisdictions and for private firms, I've been fortunate to work with a lot of really very good and dedicated people. And I would put the Bothell staff at the top of that list. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Michael.
So I think those are the main announcements that I had. Happy to answer any other questions. We will come back to you in terms of the docket for the rest of the year. I gave you the highlights of the things that we're working on. I anticipate we will still bring all of those to you. Some things may take a little bit longer than we had originally planned, but we have several things that we still need to get through this year and several things that are in the works. So we're continuing to do that. We will figure out how to get all that done. The other thing I want to mention on Canyon Park, and I think I alluded to this earlier when we talked about the docket, we had hoped to have it all wrapped up, obviously, by the end of June and have everything buttoned up and the Council adoption and everything, but that's not going to happen. So we are hoping to get a recommendation from the Planning Commission at your second meeting in July. We may ask the Commission to do an extra meeting in July if we need to. I don't want to do that, but we may ask you to do that just so we can at least get through the Planning Commission while Mr. Blackburn is still here and get the recommendation out of the Planning Commission and then go to the Council, either if they do hold a meeting in August, to an August meeting or early September. And there are several reasons for this. One is it's important that we get this on the books as soon as possible, given the reduction in staff that we'll have to work on it. We also have projects that are moving forward in Canyon Park, so we want to get the new plan and the regulations that go with that in place before some of those projects come in the door. So a lot going on, still a lot of very exciting things happening and I'm very pleased that we've got a full Commission, really good commissioners. I've been very impressed. Was already impressed with the existing commissioners, but with all the new commissioners, all three of you, and the questions and the very thoughtful work that you've done, obviously read the materials and had some good questions and good thoughts for us going forward. So we really appreciate that and encourage you always to ask questions if we're not giving you the information that you need to make an informed decision. So with that, I will stop talking.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one of the...
Yes, sure.
I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to you, Mr. Chairman, for all of your work as Chair. You and I have had a chance to work together for a little over two years now and I just, I know you've been very dedicated, very conscientious about the work of the Planning Commission and always been available and willing to put in extra time and have extra discussions to make sure that we have what the Commission needs for the meetings and that the meetings are well-run and organized and we get to the decisions. So just been a pleasure working with you in that position and I certainly look forward to working with Commissioner Kiernan and Commissioner Kurt in those roles, but just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the staff. I know I can speak for all the staff and how much we've appreciated all of your work on the Commission and especially as Chair. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Cotterman. Thank you, Commission. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I very much appreciate that. It has been, there's a little, I guess, with that, I'm just going to kind of take a little bit of privilege here and have a do little report for myself. There was a thing that always sticks in my mind, there was a, I guess, there was a person with Arch, an expert with a regional coalition for housing that used to, he spent much time with us on affordable housing and it was just really neat. He mentioned this a couple of times after meetings. He said, when I, he said, when I, when people say, like, how do you run like a meeting or whatever, he says, and how do you, you know, a whole entire commission, he says, look to the Bothell Planning Commission. And I thought that was really high marks. It was unasked for and it just shows, I guess, I think how cordial the Commission has been historically. There's always differences of opinion, but you know, we get through it, we ask good questions. There's a lot of dedication here. I'm just so, and I'm so thrilled with Commissioner Gustafson, Alderks, and Olson. Your guys are going to be a great addition, I can already tell. Your guys are going to be a great addition, I can already tell. But yeah, so let's just keep doing what we've been doing, and I think we'll be okay. It looks like, considering Michael's comments about maybe some staff reductions and certain things of the city, maybe the Planning Commission takes on an even more important role. I know we, as commissioners, we basically are unpaid, essentially, and so I know it's a lot to ask from people, but, so thanks to all the hours that people put in, it is a lot of time to be asked, so. But there's exciting times ahead for a great city of Bothell, so, for sure. And just before I ask if there's any other reports, it's kind of with the bittersweet, well, I'll just say that later in the year, I will be relocating with Crystal to the unincorporated Kitsap Peninsula. We've wanted to give a shot at small-scale farming for some time, and we finally found a place. And so it's been my honor to be able to serve with the Commission. I will be serving up through, try to get through Canyon Park and also the downtown public space, or what do we call it now? Downtown?
Right, public.
Public space, okay. So get through those two things before you get to get rid of me, but it's been such a pleasure to work on the Commission. It's a very fun job. I'm just looking at the face on here. I know you guys would be in good hands, and so, yeah, just keep doing what we're doing. And with that, I'll go ahead and be quiet, but I just want to let everybody know that. But is there any other reports from other members out there before we wrap it up? Looks like we've got seven minutes. Not seeing any hands. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have to take a vote on this?
Probably.
Okay, we're going to take a vote on this, too. So it looks like Commissioner Olson has motion? Motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Olson. Do we have a second on that? Okay. Chair Kirnan seconds that? Future Chair Kirnan?
I second.
Okay.
Yes, second the motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right. Can you take a quick vote, I guess?
I'll go through this quickly, so we don't have to extend the meeting past nine o'clock. So, motion to adjourn, Commissioner Alderks, aye or nay?
Aye.
Is that an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kurt?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirnan?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Piestrip?
Aye.
Thank you. Chair Vleet?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Congratulations again, Kevin and Carson. We are adjourned.